Your support, you know, behind the scenes, he won't be successful. And he clearly was.
And I just told him to get out of the house.
That's what it takes sometimes. So, anyway, Chris, do you have anything you want to say?
Just a couple of words. First off, I couldn't have done, accomplished the things that I did without the cooperation of city councils, the city administrators, and especially the citizens of Cortez and several other people that were in my department at that point in time. Ed Hallam, Mark Boblet, which you know, just retired. They were here during those times. And without that support and working with the citizens to say, yeah, this is where we want to go, and getting them to support some of our bond issues and directions, these things wouldn't have happened. So, I want to thank everybody that worked with me at the same time, because it wasn't just me. Thank you.
Well, Chris, you've truly made an impact. Thank you for your service. All right, we're going to move on to be on our agenda. Another celebration, celebration of the delinquent audit completion.
Yeah, good evening again, Mayor and Council. Drew Sanders here, City Manager. I would like to invite the finance team up to join me, please. As you all know, Sarah Coffey, Kelly Kosky, and Lynette... Reese, I know that. I'm sorry, sorry, Lynette. Anyway, as you all know, our audits are complete. The nightmare is over. As of December 28th, 2023, the audits, the final audits were completed. Now, a year and a half ago, we got out of the high-risk zone. We got, you know, the high-risk audits were all done, and then it was into completion mode. But without completion, we still weren't done. And so, the nightmare is over. These are the folks that did it, and I just wanted to bring it before council and recognize them for the many years of hard work and dedication. This, we talked about this two and a half, three years ago, of how not only is this going to be hard, they're going to have to take on extra duties. There's extra stress. I noticed that they have their spouses here with them this evening. The stress was on them and their families, and I'm sure the sleepless nights and all that went into getting this massive job complete. These are the heroes of the night. I would just like to recognize them in front of council and in front of the community and thank them sincerely for the hard work, expertise, and dedication that they have delivered on our behalf. So, thank you very, very much. With that being said, Mayor, we actually, in light of trying to get a celebration going a little bit, we actually have a cake over here that we would invite the council and any of our guests here this evening to join in with us at your pleasure, Mayor.
Yes, all right. Should we end this meeting or do C- quick?
I would just close it.
All right.
So, enjoy yourselves.
Okay, yeah, so we'll end the workshop and we'll start a meeting at 7:30. So, please join us all for cake and thank you for being here tonight.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Oh, this is the Cortez City Council Regular Meeting. Today's Tuesday, January ninth, 2024, and the time is 7:30 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Donna, can we get the roll call?
Yes, Keef Offer.
Here.
Dehaven.
Here.
Sproul.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Yaasi.
Here.
Dobree.
Here.
Medina.
Here. All right, and then ask council for approval of the agenda or any changes that folks would like to make?
I move that council approve the agenda for January ninth, 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Dobree.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Keef Offer.
Aye.
Sproul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye.
All right, we're moving on to number two on our agenda, the Consent Agenda. The listing under Consent Agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or a council member may request that an item may be removed from the consent agenda at this time prior to council's vote. I'll ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion after listing them out. A, approval of the work session and agenda minutes for December 12th, 2023. B, approval of the expenditure list for January ninth, 2024. C, approval of a renewal fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license for Safeway Stores 46, Inc., DBA Safeway Store Number 1892 located at 1580 East Main Street, Cortez. D, approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license for Lakeside Lanes, Inc., DBA Lakeside Lanes located at 410 Lakeside Drive, Cortez. And E, approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license for El Burro Pancho LLC, DBA Gustavo's Authentic Mexican Restaurant and Bar located at 125 East Main Street, Suite A, Cortez.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay. Motion by Dobree and seconded by Rainey.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Keef Offer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Sproul.
Yes.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye.
All right, we're on three on our agenda, Public Participation. There's no limit to the number of speakers, although public comment will be held to an overall time limit of 30 minutes. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. Do we have any public speakers tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll close that part of the agenda and move on to four presentations. We have none tonight, so five public hearings, no public hearings. Six unfinished business, we have none, so seven, new business. Seven A is Resolution Number One, Series 2024, a resolution authorizing a mail ballot election to be held on April 2nd, 2024, presented by Linda Smith, our city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight before you is Resolution Number One, Series 2024. The resolution allows for the City of Cortez to have a mail ballot election as allowed by Colorado Revised Statutes 3110-908. The municipal election would be held as outlined in the City Charter and the State of Colorado statutes and regulations, and the city clerk would be appointed as a designated election official for the city. Staffs recommending approval of Resolution Number One, Series 2024. If you have any questions.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that council approve Resolution Number One, Series 2024, a resolution authorizing a mail ballot election to be held on April 2nd, 2024.
Second.
A motion made by Yaasi and seconded by Keef Offer.
Dobree.
Aye.
Keef Offer.
Aye.
Sproul.
Yes.
Rainey.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye.
All right, we're moving on to B on our agenda, 7B on our agenda, Intergovernmental Agreement with Monizuma County Clerk and Recorder.
Thank you. This intergovernmental agreement is between the Monizuma County Clerk and Recorder in the City of Cortez. It outlines that are our different duties that we both do during the election process. The county clerk mostly does everything to do with our ballots. They have all the designated, you know, electors that can vote in the election. They also send those ballots out. This year, they will be receiving them. They have a new machine that we are going to have the great, you know, the great authority to be able to use to check our signatures, which takes a lot of time for us to do. So they're going to authorize us to be able to use that this year. So I'm really thankful for that offer from them. We will be still in charge of all the notices in the newspaper. We will still receive ballots here. It will be the same process that we've done for, you know, forever since we've done mail ballots. But they are going to take on that job of doing our signature check this year. So I just wanted to make sure you knew the difference in the, like, the intergovernmental agreement we did a couple of years ago. That's the only change in it. Patrick has reviewed the intergovernmental agreement. We made a few changes with their attorney. So tonight I present to you the intergovernmental agreement to move forward to be approved.
Thank you for the great relationship that you've built with the county. You know, Kim does an amazing job overseeing our elections. You know, I trust the process and I just really appreciate that they help us every time.
And they, I don't know what we do without them. They're just absolutely wonderful. They do elections all the time. We do them once every two years. So they're really our expert. I really lean on her to help us. We have a group togetherness with the Town of Mankas, Town of Dolores, Town of Cortez, or City of Cortez, plus the county clerk. We work together really close and we all try to make our elections very similar for our electors. So we're really lucky we have them. So thank you.
Linda, do you know if they will have a, I guess, for the lack of a better word, like a transparency session with the candidates that are running?
Yes, we will. We've ordered the test ballots. We bring in the candidates from each of our communities. We gather together and we vote, you know, just for fun. It's just a test time, but they can see the process. And it's just really a nice time. If we have, they have a bigger room now over there at the county, so we're able to invite community members if people want to see that process. I'm not real sure how many that will include this year, but as soon as we know, we'll put that notice out in case other people would like to see it. Because it's just a really nice time to see that, how that works. It's just really a nice opportunity for other people to see it besides us, you know, that we've seen, we get to see it. But, yeah, and we will have that for the candidates.
Thank you.
Any questions for Linda or?
I move that council approve the intergovernmental agreement by and between City of Cortez and Monizuma County Clerk and Recorder for the conduct and administration of the 2024 coordinated election to be held April 2nd, 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Rainey.
Rainey.
Aye.
Sproul.
Yes.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Keef Offer.
Aye.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. All right, we're going to move on to C on our agenda. Seven C is Ordinance Number 1324, Series 2024. First reading, which incorporates the updated franchise agreement between the City of Cortez and Empire Electric, presented by Kevin. Is the mic on? It should be green. And you might want to put it, okay.
How's that? So I'm Kevin Kissler, the city engineer for the City of Cortez. Unfortunately, Brian Peckins, Public Works Director, had to leave on some, I believe it was emergency family business. So I'll be going over the franchise agreements. I'm sure you've all looked at it over your packets, just some quick background on it. The franchise agreement was originally drafted between Empire Electric Association and the City of Cortez in 2003. That contract had a maximum contract term limit of 20 years, so 2023, it's time to renew it. So a lot of city staff and public works and our city attorney all looked over it. Mostly the changes are largely procedural changes. It's essentially an operation agreement between Empire Electric and the city. It doesn't really touch on a whole lot of billing issues. It's just mostly issues such as a few key updates. We reduced the extension or the renewal term from 10 years to five years. The reasoning behind that is just because of the pace of growth of new technology. We feel that we don't want to renew this contract as often, or we want to renew this contract more frequently so that we have time to adjust the growth in technology to what we implement in our network. Other changes to that effect, we'll be getting GIS information now instead of paper maps as far as what the city owns, what Empire Electric owns. So mostly those are the procedural changes. There's a summary of changes made per article, if you'd all review that in your packet. The suggestion from city staff is that we approve this renewed contract as it's currently written. We already got tentative approval from Empire Electric. Their board of directors met on it and they approved the draft ordinance as it is now. So the staff's suggestion is that City of Council accept the franchise agreement as it is now. However, it is an ordinance, so it'll still have to go to a second reading for final approval. But we want to try and be able to convey it to Empire Electric that City Council has already tentatively pre-approved the franchise agreement as it is, just to make sure that it gets finalized simultaneously on both ends.
I got a little question for you. Empire Electric will replace the lights and, of course, charge us. They can arbitrarily decide which lights they want to, say they want to add a light. They have to go through us first, correct?
Correct. They'll have to go through us first because they'll want to make sure that we pay for all the installation fees. So it has to be directed by the city. But if it's directed by the city, we'll pay all the installation fees. And then once the installation fees have been paid, then that fixture in perpetuity, if the bulb needs to be replaced or adjusted or maintained, or the deflector needs to be adjusted, that'll all be performed by Empire Electric.
Yeah, I assumed that that's the way it was. I'm just reading Article Five, which says, "The company will charge the city to maintain street lighting system in accordance to the company's most recent overhead lighting tariff." I just wanted to make sure that they weren't arbitrarily able to change a light without, or adding a light system without letting us know. Changing a bulb is no issue, that's what they do. But adding a light is just, that was the question, and you answered it, thank you.
Yeah, no, they won't be able to arbitrarily add new infrastructure and then bill us for it. And one of the things our city attorney added was some additional contract language, just in case any provision of this contract was found to be unenforceable or found to be in violation. It doesn't nullify the entire contract. So it provides a little more contractual protection for the city just to make sure that if something like that happens, that we have the ability to say, no, that's not part of our contract, you can't do that.
And they were receptive to the reduction of years or how often we need to renew this?
Yeah, they also thought that the five-year renewal term was a good idea. We'll have, in that five-year time period, some discussion between Empire Electric and city staff as far as optimization improvements we can make on our network, again, trying to capture some of those new technologies to try and reduce the demand load. A lot of the charges we get from Empire Electric don't necessarily have to do with how much electricity we use, but how quickly we use it and at what times of day we use it. So they want those charges on their network, so to say, to be a little more metered out just because it makes it easier for them to deliver power. So it'll give us five years to collaboratively try and figure out, you know, whether we do digital controllers on streetlights or whether we adjust the timing on which lights come on. We'll just have to take some time to work those out and make sure it works for both parties.
Thank you.
I just want to say, good job on your presentation. It was really concise but informative, and I think that you're, I'm going to tell Brian when I see him that you did a fantastic job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Concise but informative is what every engineer strives for.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move that City Council approve on first reading Ordinance Number 1324, is that correct? 1324, Series 2024, and an ordinance containing a revised franchise agreement between the City of Cortez and Empire Electric Association, Inc., and set a public hearing and second reading of the ordinance for January 23rd, 2024.
Second. Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Yaasi.
Keef Offer.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Sproul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, council, thank you, mayor.
All right, we're on 7D on our agenda, Resolution Number Two, Series 2024, certifying the 2023 mill levy for the 2024 budget.
Good evening, mayor and council. In your packets this evening, you will find the mill levy certification for 2024. Each year, the City of Cortez certifies to the Monizuma County Board of Commissioners the mill levy to be collected for property taxes on behalf of the city. Annually, the city has the option of choosing either a five-and-a-half percent increase or the Tabor limitation for the total amount of mill levy imposed. The most restrictive of those two options are what the city must certify to. For the very first time ever, the five-and-a-half percent was more restrictive than the Tabor limitation. I'd never seen that happen before. So I think it's important to note that this is different than other years that we have certified to the county. For the calendar year, the city is requesting just over $122,000 to be collected, and that's actually an increase from 2023 of $6,582. It's staff recommendation that council approve Resolution Number Two, Series 2024, which is a resolution to set the mill levy to the county commissioners of Monizuma County. Does anybody have questions?
I'm just curious as to why you think, or like, why it's the 5.5 this year?
So included in the Tabor calculation is an inflation factor that is set by DOLA. It's actually lags behind one year of current inflation rates. And for this mill levy certification, that inflation rate was 8%. So when you plug that into the Tabor calculation, it actually turned out that the five-and-a-half percent was the most restrictive. It's interesting.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that the City Council adopt Resolution Number Two, Series 2024, a resolution certifying the 2023 mill levy for the 2024 budget year to the Board of County Commissioners of Monizuma County, Colorado.
Second.
Was it David? Okay, sorry. I'm a little rusty, it's been a while. Motion made by Yaasi and seconded by Rainey.
Dobree.
Aye.
Keef Offer.
Aye.
Sproul.
Yes.
Rainey.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, we're on 7E now on our agenda, Application for Peace Officer Behavioral Health Support and Community Partnerships Grant Program, presented by Chief of Police Vern Knuckles.
Good evening, mayor, city council, thank you. I'm in front of council, seeking council's approval to apply for the Peace Officers Behavioral Health Support and Community Partnership Grant Program. It's a grant that provides mental health services for law enforcement. If we were successful, the grant would start March of '24 and end of June '26. So it's a multi-yearish grant. We're seeking $113,954 in the grant. What we would fund with the grant would be to utilize a community resource for counseling services at the police department. That community resource is somebody that we currently use, but volunteers their time and has done that for 26 years, probably, 26 years. And I would like to be able to offer a little bit to this person. We have a long history and we, there's trust that's been built there. So to me, this resource is something we would like to keep. It would also cover the cost of mandatory wellness checks for every employee at the police department. And that would be an annual 40-minute session with contracted counseling service for every employee once a year. That's kind of twofold. The benefits of that is early detection of mental health problems, and it also helps alleviate the stigma with mental health and law enforcement by making everybody go, from the chief down. I would be included in that. Everybody has to do it, and then when you do it, you kind of realize it's not that big a deal, really, you know? We'd also use it to provide telehealth counseling through a third-party counseling service. That would be roughly four one-hour sessions or 40-minute sessions for every employee as they needed it. It's not actually, I didn't budget for every employee, about two-thirds of the employee, with the understanding that some will use it, some won't, some might use it more than four, but because, you know, other people don't use it, and we would monitor that. Establish a family support program for the police department, employees and their families. That has come to light since the events in November. That was very apparent that that event was as hard or harder on family members as it was, you know, the police department. So we're seeking a little bit of money there so we can have get-togethers and, you know, just bring the family in. Provide funds to conduct team building, group therapy sessions, and family support events for the police department employees and their families, which contain a mental health component from the contracted mental health provider. Assist in development of policies that support police officers who are involved in shootings or fatal use of force. And then also develop a line-of-duty death policy, which we didn't have, a written policy that would help guide us through, would have helped guide us through November 29th. So we would like to use a little bit of that money and develop that and get that in place. And then assistance in the development and implementation of a survey that we would put out before we implemented these programs. And then, again, at the end of the year, at the end of each year, to kind of track, to try to get some data on how many, are more people using it to see if it's working? So that's really kind of the 30,000-foot level of what we would use this grant for if we were awarded. And I would entertain any questions you might have.
When will you know if we're awarded the grant?
February, end of February, middle of February, I think, is when they said it would be awarded. Let me see. We would find out in March, it would start in June. So it's June 24 actual to June 26 is what the grant would run.
Okay.
So we would find out in March, be able to start using it in June.
Okay.
My understanding is there would be no matching funds required from the City of Cortez.
No matching funds.
Solely a DOLA grant.
Yeah.
When you have an officer, or if you ever had an officer that had some mental health issues that you suspected, can you require them now to seek mental health counseling? And if so, who pays for it? And if so, who pays for it?
I don't know if we can require them. That might be an HR question. And I know that the third-party counselors that we're looking at using, the contracted counselors we're looking at using, would not take our insurance. We do have, through the city, services that will. The reason that I'm looking at this service outside of the city is because they are law enforcement-specific.
So this is exactly what they would do with this? If you have an officer possibly with some mental health issues, this grant would help you to send them to get their necessary help or be evaluated?
We could, yes.
Is that true?
Yes.
You mentioned that it would be available to anyone in the department. Does that include administration or admin as well as dispatch?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It feels like you're spot-on with that, the idea that kind of we don't know what we need until, you know, something really happens. And I really like that you really kind of tied that back to the events that happened on November twenty-ninth. And I could see a lot of these things be extremely valuable, not only for the PD and individual people, but the family as well. So I think this is a really great idea.
And that was my goal. You know, as time goes on, we're doing good as an agency right now. But, you know, sometimes, as time goes on, things start coming up, and I would love to have this in place so that those resources are readily available, and it's a resource that police officers trust and will go to. The third-party counselors that we're looking at are being utilized now by some of the employees that were involved, and nothing but positive, so.
I move that council approve the application to DOLA for the Peace Officers' Behavioral Health Support and Community Partnerships Grant Program.
Second.
Motion made by DeHaven and seconded by Spurle.
DeHaven.
Aye.
Dobry.
Aye.
Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Spurle.
Yes.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. Good luck, Chief Knuckles, and keep us updated on it.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we're going to move on on our agenda. Eight draft resolutions and ordinances, we have none. So nine is City Attorney Report.
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right, and we'll move on to ten, City Manager Report.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Being the first of the year and all of our business concluded, I didn't have a formal report drafted this evening. Most of what I wanted to talk about was actually covered in the workshop with the conclusion of our audit situation. I did want to report in that I received information from our Finance Department this afternoon wherein they were able to tally our final twenty-twenty-three sales tax receipts. And as you recall from the budget process, we projected a one-point-three percent increase for twenty-twenty-three, which we thought was pretty good. We actually came up, the final tally, of two-point-four-four percent. So I mean, it's not a lot, but it does equate to three-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars for our community. And so, you know, we're good there. On the little bit of a downside there, which is not horrendous, but our lodgers' tax came in about two and a half percent lower than last year, but that's not way off the mark. So anyway, with that being said, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to City Council Committee Reports. We'll start with Lydia. Oh, nothing, okay.
I attended the Historic Preservation Board last week, first week of the year, and they are already planning for Historic Preservation Day for twenty-twenty-four and finalizing the grant application for the History Colorado Grant.
David, do you have a board report?
Yes, the Public Works Committee met yesterday. And the good news is, we have a potential candidate for our student member, membership. And also, we're recruiting local artists to compete for a coloring book for the Heritage Center, which is, will be rewarded with not just congratulations, but dollars and cents. That's it.
All right. And then my report on the workshop, we celebrated Chris Burkett, who's been employed for the city for forty-five years and basically built our park system. And then we celebrated our Finance Department, who worked hard for the last few years completing our audits and bringing us into financial compliance and hopefully building trust back with the community. So thank you, Kelly. Thank your department. We appreciate their dedication and hard work, and hopefully they can relax now. And then, and we have cake, and if we have leftover cake, please take a piece home so we don't have leftovers. All right, so then, moving on on our agenda, other items of business, none, public participation. Do we have any public commenters? All right, then we'll, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion made by Yaasi and seconded by DeHaven.
Sorry, DeHaven.
Aye.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Dobry.
Aye.
Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Spurle.
Yes.
Rainey.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye.
All right, Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year, yes.